Under a SWIFTMUD permit, and any significant changes, we'll have to go back to SWIFTMUD and have the engineering looked at and make sure the stormwater ponds are adequate. We're proposing, or assuming that the pond will have to get significantly bigger to do this option that's on the screen here. You can see the pond is just kind of L-shaped along the edge of the parking. It will have to grow into the grass area in order to accomplish this.
Mark, go back to the other one.
No, that's another option. But on this one particular here, this would be difficult because we're taking out the roundabout, and we really can't do that in order to meet code, fire code. So we would have to keep the roundabout in there, correct? Okay. There is another option that we were asked to look at. There you go. And that also could pose problems with fire code because of -- go ahead.
Jennifer Molnar, Fire Marshal, City Department of Fire. Yes, you are correct. So the second option here, taking away the roundabout, would limit the ability for fire apparatus to make a safe turnaround in that design.
I don't know whose hand was up first, so, um, go ahead.
This is more what I had been suggesting the last three times I brought it up. But I also suggested was to make it like it was before, where there is a little bit of a roundabout at the end of this L-shape. This whole horseshoe thing is way too much cement in the middle of a park, in my opinion. The first option, that's just the straight line, is really not going to fix the problem that we currently have. The current, whatever we call that, roundabout that we have there is all cracked and broken from people driving on it and parking on it, and it's completely wasted space. And now it's starting to look really nasty because people have cracked all the cement on it. So that, in one way or the other, I think that's got to be taken out. But I do think this is a much better choice, where you would have an L-shape and a roundabout at the end of it, so people could come in and drop off things for the pavilion use, and then turn around and go back out. And that's what we had before.
As long as we could provide a roundabout within the 150-foot limit of a dead-end drive roadway, it could be accomplished to meet fire code standards for apparatus access. So it would have to be a roundabout similar in size to the existing roundabout at the park now to safely navigate a turnaround for a fire truck.
Okay. Debbie?
Well, can we go to the first one? The more straight in? This one seems like we're spending a lot of money for not much change, and I still don't see that we've addressed the problem of being able to get vehicles close to the pavilion. My constituents, what I'm hearing, is the problem isn't the parking as much as access to the pavilion. They want something that they can drop things off, drop people off. You know, it's really hard if you're taking someone in a wheelchair to an event at the gazebo to get from parking to that particular location. And if you've got a cooler and a couple of chairs, it's even harder. So I don't think any of these are good, but I also wonder why we are even thinking about this when we still don't have a master plan for our parks. I just think we need that before we do anything to any of our parks, because if we could say, you know, "This park is where we have these kind of events, so we need this much parking," then it would make sense to make changes. But, you know, my folks are telling me that all this is going to be as extra parking for Carmellos.
Well, do you have comments?
Yeah, I agree with Debbie that I think this is something, this question should be incorporated into the master plan. I think that we've been piecemealing these things too much, and we are in a moment right now that we could think this happens. I do think we're just spending money and possibly taking a lot of good park, green space away.
Do you have a comment?
I want to -- of course I have a comment.
Okay.
Okay. I think on a lot of these projects, not just this one, we should be procrastinating a little bit until we do get a master plan in, because we're throwing Band-Aids out there, and we don't even know what the SOAR is yet. Or if we do know what the SOAR is yet, we don't know what the diagnosis is yet. And I absolutely agree with Debbie. I don't know that we should be even addressing this. We're going to get the master plan in August.
Yeah.
I mean, so this really should be something, and these types of things, should be something, I think, that are shelved until we actually have a more holistic idea of where and vision of where we want to go as a community, and incorporate those ideas into all of our park system. I mean, there has been a comment that maybe we're at that point where we should be having a park district. Well, I'm not sure that we can afford to have a park district administratively at this point in time, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't think in those terms, including with the other properties that we have in the city. So I agree with Debbie totally.
I agree with doing things within a holistic plan. However, this particular single item, no matter what we do, no matter what we do, no matter what kind of a plan, the fact is, we don't have access, close access, to the pavilion. That isn't going to be, a master plan isn't going to change that.
Well, they may come up with a different idea. If we pose that question to them, they may come up with an innovative idea that we haven't thought of on how to actually accomplish it. That's the only point I make.
I understand. I understand. We can certainly offer that up to Dover Coal and ask them to take a look at that. And there's plenty of time to submit this to a local option sales tax. I agree with Lynn that having something that kind of where it curves and there's still the roundabout that's needed, but that roundabout is right next to the pavilions so that it's convenient, and it may add a few parking spaces, but it's providing what's needed as far as the turnaround is necessary, but it gets it close to the pavilion. And I don't see where a master plan is going to change that.
Agreed.
I mean, it's, all the master planning we do is not going to change that fact, so.
I mean, with that said, I mean, this is what they do for a living. I mean, they design parks, and so I think that they could provide expertise on how to achieve doing this. I mean, that's what I'm saying. Let them have this as a question, and they can get us to this goal. I think they can do better than we can, rather than us just kind of guessing at it.
And their conclusion might be exactly what Lynn says.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that as a solution. I'm just saying is that we are in a situation with Dover Coal and the master plan to pose a question, to see if there might be also a really neat alternative way that they just may have the idea. And we're only talking between now and August. I think it's worth a couple more months of chawing on to see if there's another way to do it or not.
Well, I would offer up that this is our thought, that we need to have something closer. What that is, let them then, I mean, I will at least put it forward, that we need to have something where the parking comes closer to the pavilion, or that gets a drop-off closer to the pavilion that accommodates the, and what it looks like. Maybe they can come up with a better mousetrap.
Then I would ask to preserve as much grass as possible.
Well, I do think that the current traffic circle at the end of what we have now is in terrible condition, and it looks terrible, and it reflects poorly on the city, that we can't even maintain it because there's too many people actually parking on it.
Yeah, I've seen people parking on it.
And I had a constituent call me that fell on it. He was riding his bicycle and thought to go across it and face-planted, so it's not safe. Is there any way that we can just flatten that for the time being to make it safer without going through a whole big this?
You mean, take out the roundabout?
The raised part of it.
The raised part in the center.
It's all cracked and broken. It looks terrible.
And there are even times when you can go down there that there are police cars parked on it, which, you know, if it's not supposed to be parked on it, that doesn't say anything.
I can offer a little bit of information on that curbing that's in the center, that decorative paved curbing that's there. That is considered a mountable curbing for emergency vehicles, so that we can effectively make the radius turns in that roundabout for emergency vehicles. So obviously, when you see emergency vehicles parked on it, the public sees it as, you know, a mountable curb, and they're driving over it as well. If it was removed, it would still offer, you know, adequate access for us. It's there so that we don't put plants in there, and we can actually drive on it to turn around. It's the same design we have at Lashley Park, quite frankly, at the end of Lashley Park. It's the same design.
Okay.
We have a roundabout at the end of Lashley Park?
Okay, any more discussion on this item, then?
Well, what is your pleasure?
Well, I think that what I got from this, if I can summarize, that we want to see the roundabout, we need some kind of a roundabout, or some kind of, a way for the fire trucks to be able to make a full turn, and it needs to be right by the pavilion, so that it can be used as a drop-off. And if there are additional parking spaces to get there, that's fine, but it's really, the goal is to get the roundabout closer to the pavilion.
And preserve as much grass as possible.
Yes, and preserve as much grass as we can.
So the horseshoe shape is definitely out. Does everybody agree on that?
Y'all agree on that?
I think that fits pretty ugly.
We agree with you, Howard, that we want to preserve as much grass as possible.
Yeah.
No, we agree. Okay, I think we have what we need, then. Thank you. Okay. New business, hands-on Henry, small dog park expansion. Gary, it's all yours. You're the one who brought this to us.
I brought this forward after meeting with several dog-loving, kind, Punta Gordaian citizens. The proposal was, if you bring the picture up, is to extend the small dog park a little bit into the big dog park, because there's just a lot of little dogs. And sometimes it gets, interestingly, crowded and cute. But by doing this, you're giving up about 5% of the big dog part of the park, and basically increasing the small dog part as far as ground goes by almost 50%. There are other questions and needs for both sides of the dog park, for additional amenities, but I'm not choosing to address that issue right now. I think that's something that could be, that we should address in the future, whether it's through sales tax, through private donations, or maybe a combination of both, such as we did with the playground in Gilcrest Park at some time in the future. But for a small initial investment at this time, we can mitigate a lot of the pressure for the small dog park without adding any difficulty for the large dog park. Typically, not always, but typically, when I've been intentionally dropping by there, there's a lot more small dogs than there are of the big dogs on any given moment of day, including in the heat of the afternoon. The big dogs tend not to be there at all in the heat of the afternoon. We do have some rather strong individuals. One of my appened to knows in the office right now, in the audience right now, that for some reason liked to meet right around 3:00. And they have their dogs, and they have a great time, and the dogs go nuts, and then they bring them home. So anyway, with that, I'm proposing for your consideration to proceed as follows by taking out approximately 40-foot of the back fence of the small dog park and replacing it with approximately 72 feet in an angle, which again would increase the small dog park by about 50%, and reducing the big dog park by approximately 5%.
Comments?
Well, I would just like to say that Saturday morning, I went to the dog park, and there were four small dog owners there and 10 to 15 large dog owners. I went in not prefacing it that I was there to see about the expansion or anything, I just wanted to know what they all thought of the dog park. All of the small dog owners asked me why we thought we needed to enlarge it. They had no idea that this was even under consideration, and if we did do that, why were we going to put them in the swampy part that didn't drain? So we might want to think about where we're expanding, and again, I say, you know, we're putting a Band-Aid on a problem that we're not sure where exactly the problem is. And I didn't talk to a single person there that this was one of their top five things wrong with the dog park. They wanted drainage, shade, fire ants, and more area that wasn't grass, like bark or something, I don't know. They, I'm not sure where that came from, but two of them didn't, thought we had too much grass.
Nobody said make it bigger.
Okay. Lynn?
I agree with what Debbie just said. I've heard from several people also that the most important criteria that they would like to see is shade there for the small dog park area. That was a very big deal, because there are some shade trees in the big dog park area. And I think we need to do more than meet with just one group of people. There's hundreds of people that use this park on a daily basis. Maybe we get a bunch of them together and do a brainstorming session of what the long-term goal for this park should be before we spend any money. I just think that, I think you're right, we're putting a Band-Aid on a much bigger problem. This park continues to grow in popularity, and we have a lot of people that go there. I mean, it's incredible when you drive by there in the morning, there's, you know, probably 40 or 50 cars there on any given morning. So I just, I would hate to see us spend money now and then have to change something again in three or four or six months.
And don't get me wrong, they love the park. I mean, they had their complaints, but they love the park. I don't care, I'm finishing my sentence.
Okay.
Okay, Gary.
I will be very comfortable and very pleased if what this does is pose the question to properly advance the discussion on how to really do this. I have really no problem with anything that you two ladies say. And I think it's great if we force that question now, so that we can pre-plan, I like, you know, to do holistic things and pre-plan things, so that we can really make this one. One thing that Nancy and I have experience with, that you guys don't, is God forbid you should even consider moving the dog park.
Oh, right.
Okay? Let alone, so this is a very well-used, very loved piece of city property, and if the result of my bringing it forward today is to force a true conversation on how to really make it even better for all dog owners in concern, I think that that's an acceptable way to go. And I would move that we do so.
Well, would this be something that we would want to consider? What would it take to make it really a much nicer dog park and make that something that could be a local option sales tax project?
Well, funding-wise, it could be definitely a sales tax project, but if you're asking staff to put together a group of folks to come up with an overall plan for the dog park, yeah, we can do that. But the sales tax committee, we would probably want to provide the sales tax committee with what that plan might be with an estimated cost, so they can decide where it might want to be on the priority. So first thing first is, if it's council direction for us to take a look at the dog park as a whole, we know we have to do ADA improvements there.
Yes.
We know we have to. So if you want to look at the whole dog park as a whole, and if that's the idea, and to come up with, here's all of the types of improvements we might want to do there.
Shade, shade structures, whatever it is.
Then we can hand it over to the sales tax committee.
And I would also like to get the dog owners that use the park a lot involved in the discussion, and also, again, in the spirit that we had with the playground in Gilcrest Park, to ask them if they would, you know, we're going to only be able to budget so many dollars, there might be only so many dollars, and if they want even a little bit more accoutrements or something like that, then to ask them to step forward, too, is the same way that the mothers did at Gilcrest Park. I think it would be a delightful way to seriously start developing that more expansive vacant piece of property that I think we, and hopefully in the long term, will bring value to the city with.
Can we schedule like a brainstorming workshop for the dog owners? I mean, I think that would be a way to start, and get some.
Can we bring our dogs?
Get some input and feedback from them.
Well, I think that that's part of what we can ask staff.
Yeah. I mean, I think that would be a good way to start, and you'll get input. People will participate.
So we can, yeah, staff can take the lead. We do it plenty of times. Do you want to have a council AA is on to this project, or should we just invite all the council members when we get the group together?
I think we should all be part of it.
Yeah, I think it would be fun.
Okay.
I think, yeah, that would be fun.
Could we take a question from Mr. Wise Glass?
Hello, Mayor, could I make a comment on this?
Sure.
I realize it's out of normal protocol, but he's got a dog in his hunt.
He does?
Yeah. Okay, Max.
Well, he missed the opportunity to make his comment.
I know, but the discussion went different than expected.
Thank you, good morning.
Please take your name.
Max Wise Glass, I reside at 727 Via Tunis. I have to disagree with the council lady as far as the number of dogs involved at the small dog park. In season, there is many as 25 to 30 dogs at a time. They're tripping over each other. It is unbelievable. Now, some of the dogs like to run the fence, and that's a way for them to get their exercise. By extending the fence, as we, the city has proposed, it will give them much more running space. Now, as far as shade is concerned, we're a group of dedicated dog owners that come to the park every day without fail, rain or shine. We have vested interest in that small dog park to the extent that we have contributed our own money to put in trees into that park and beautified it. I don't know if the council is aware of that. I guess not. So we request to extend the fence would not be a great expense to the city. We would even be willing to share some of that expense of moving the fence. That is, as much as we are concerned about making the park a little bit larger. Now, the large dogs use that section to poop in, so they'll just have to find another spot to poop in and let our dogs enjoy the park. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Now, I heard, and I know the court might want a clarification on this, two different approaches. One to have sort of a citizens' little committee, and the other would be a city council workshop.
I didn't hear a city council workshop.
Well, there was a workshop brainstorming session.
That council could attend.
Well, so we have sunshine law.
I understand.
So it probably would be better if that's the approach the city council might be leaning towards, to actually have a city council workshop session where the dog owners are invited to have a workshop brainstorming session in the city chambers, subject to the sunshine law.
Well, we've done it other ways. We've also had workshops where council members were allowed to attend but not comment. And that is not a violation of the sunshine law.
No, but it would, I mean, no, but it would functionally be better if it was treated as a workshop where we have recording and all minutes are available and things of that nature, that would be, especially with a typical workshop.
How about like the one we did with the bicycles, the one we did at PGICA, and it went well. It was where staff ran it, and it was done that way, and we came, but it was done by staff, and it was, and so citizens could talk, and it was done well.
Well, but there was also a Q&amp;A period at the end of that as well.
But we didn't say anything.
Hmm.
But you might want to have, ask questions, and so that would maybe run afoul of the game, of the rules, if you had this less.
I think that what you are suggesting is more than what we, I heard council talking about.
That's fine. I'm just suggesting that that is another approach.
Your will is not what the council's will is.
Absolutely, I understand that.
Okay, and so David, what I heard is council wanted to get the input of our residents and allow staff to get the input of the residents. What council thinks about that is immaterial. It's all about hearing from our public.
I understand.
That's it.
The last two meetings we had, we had a meeting regarding noise abatement in the downtown music. We had more than one council member there. They did not say a word.
Correct.
And we told the folks who came to the meeting, do not even address a council member. It's not that they're, they don't want to discuss with you, they can't. It worked fine. We had a budget community conversation. We had a lot, pretty good attendance. Council members were there. They didn't say one word. They listened, and it gave the public an opportunity to speak freely. We had a very nice conversation. It seemed to work well in that informal-type atmosphere. My observation.
So what do you want to do about the immediate moving of the fence?
I would like to table it until we know, I mean, maybe we can make the dog park way bigger and still only spend a minimal amount of money. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not willing to spend that much money for something that we're not sure is going to fix the real problem.
Agreed.
Agree.
I know, and I'm the Lone Ranger, so, but again, I would be pleased, though, that if it forces the conversation.
Absolutely.
To make it a much nicer one. So I will concede that I have lost my point at this point in time for future discussion, but gratefully would encourage us to go forward with the community discussion.
But I also want to acknowledge the residents' input and that it is appreciated, and it will, it'll help us drive some better solution in the long run.
I will try to get it fixed.
Agreed.
Okay.
So we'll take the lead in getting grouped together.
Okay, good. Okay, next item, request for Habitat for Humanity.
We have a city-owned property on the corner of MLK and East Helen, next door to the three single-family homes that the city donated the property for, for affordable housing. We have a request from Habitat for Humanity to work with the Team Punta Gorda, like they did with the house next to Bailey Brothers Park. If we donate the property to Habitat, they will then build a home, and it seemed to work well. It was done efficiently, and the house looks great next to Bailey Brothers Park, and at least it meets our strategic plan of getting some more housing.
Lynn?
I was asked to bring something forward about this. I have a constituent in my district who has been bidding on a number of different properties on the east side of town, and in every case, they're selling for the asking price or above. And the question came up, why would we not try to sell this for, let's just say, $12,000 or $15,000? It was appraised, according to the tax appraiser, at only $4,000. But if we were to put it on the market and sell the property, that money could be used for infrastructure improvements in District 1. And that was a question that got raised to me. So I throw that out as another option. I realize the need for affordable housing, and I like that we support Habitat and do all of that, but this is another option that may bring the city some revenue for a piece of property we would otherwise not use.
Gary?
I see a quandary here, but I agree with, somebody could purchase the property and then sit on it for a long period of time and leave it undeveloped. If we were to provide this for Habitat for Humanity, it would become an occupied piece of property, also paying real estate taxes as an occupied piece of property at a reasonably short period of time. That doesn't mean that a person wouldn't buy the property and immediately put a house on it either. We wouldn't have that notion or guarantee. So I can see good arguments in both ways. With that said, we as a city council have in the past made other housing investments into this community, and I think that we need to maintain that commitment. So I'm more inclined, even though I understand Lynn's constituent's question on this very well, I think that this would be a, from our perspective, and it's next to other Habitat for Humanity homes, for that continuity to proceed with donating this piece of property for that purpose.
Are there comments?
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, I agree with Lynn's sentiment, but I think with this, it's not enough money. I mean, it wouldn't make enough of a dent, per se, just to sell it. I think it better to put it as a home, I think would be more useful to the community.
Debbie, do you have a comment?
No.
Question, is the constituent looking just to invest in property and?
To build smaller homes that are affordable homes on the east side of town.
So they're actually looking to build homes?
Yes. And in every case, he's getting outbid because they're paying full asking price and above for a lot of the properties that are being sold. And one of the things that we're seeing a lot And, and one of the things that we're seeing a lot of over on the east side is the duplex and triplex kind of units, which are very nice. They're beautiful, new homes that, that people can move into, and, and they're very affordable. And, and that is a great need. We obviously know that in the community. But we're, we're not getting to the point of tiny homes, but we're getting to what they call the shotgun homes, where, you know, they're, they're long and narrow. And we're seeing a lot of those being developed all over town. So, anyway, that was just a comment that was brought out. And either way, it goes on the tax roll. Once a property, once a house is built on it, one way or the other, it's going to be on, on the tax roll. But if a private citizen buys it, even if they don't build on it, it is going to go on the tax roll, where we're not paying tax on it right now because it's city-owned.
Right.
So, it's just another thought. I mean, I'm not saying we have to do it. I'm just throwing it out there as another option.
The, the thing, the, the affordable houses, the smaller houses that you're seeing go up on the west side of the historic district. You have them on Harvey, you have them on Shreve. When you look at the asking prices, they're not what I would consider affordable. So, I don't know if this particular individual, I mean, if they do put in some nice houses, great. Just adds more value to the community. Again, we thought this is a, as an option to meet our strategic plan of providing more affordable housing to an organization that gets things done. That's all.
And that was my point. If we do it, go with the donation of the property, we know it's going to happen, and it's going to happen very quickly. And a lived-in house is also going to stabilize, also be one of those pieces that stabilizes the community much more quickly and so forth. That's a known. Whereas if somebody does buy it, they may, it may also go forward just as quickly, or it may not. There's a lot of vacant property in that area that's been vacant for a long period of time now. And, you know, this just may encourage...
Did you get a sense that they would build immediately?
Oh, it wasn't a specific request for this piece of property. They just said that, that all of the property that's going on the market is being sold very quickly, and it's being sold for at least asking price. So, that's, that was the whole gist of the conversation was. And he might very, very well be interested in buying that property. I could certainly talk to him and ask him, but...
I think we should go forward today.
I would like for us to think in terms of what are, what is our goal? And there is a need for affordable housing in the community. We have a very limited budget. We don't have a housing budget like the county does. And, and yet, diversifying the, the housing offering within Punta Gorda is really a great need. And so, in my opinion, us, while, you know, seven thousand plus, eight thousand, whatever the number might be, might be nice, but I think I agree with Jahah. It's not going to help us achieve a lot in the infrastructure on the east, on the east side area. I would say that this is going to help us toward this goal of helping provide some, the greater goal, of helping provide some affordable housing.
I agree.
I agree.
And it's a, Habitat does a great job, and they manage the project well, and it will put someone in there that will be a wonderful homeowner, so.
And I have no problem with that either. I just threw it out because it was something that was suggested.
And I'm glad you have, because I think it's good for the discussion as to what is our real goal.
I move that we donate the land to Habitat for Humanity.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second to donate the land to Habitat for Humanity. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the discussion. Okay, we will move into recommendations from, do we need to take a break? Are we good?
We're almost done.
We're almost, I know we are. Recommendations from city officers, city manager?
So, just a reminder, July 3rd meeting. We will be doing the, you will be meeting to adopt tentative assessments for lot mowing, Burnstour Isles, Punta Gorda Isles, canal maintenance. You will also be having a discussion on the general fund budget. So, by the time we finish the meeting on July 3rd, we will have an idea of where the proposed assessment, proposed millage rate will be for advertising purposes only. That's a not-to-exceed rate. You can always go lower. And the one that will bring most of the crowd out will be, you will be getting a presentation on the pickleball committee report. So, the fire department will be on notice. Will have quite a crowd. There'll be some other items, but those are the major, major ones. And then, so just be ready.
Be ready for a full agenda, pack your lunch, right? Bring a sack lunch?
That will be a long one.
Okay. And city attorney?
Nothing other than the item on the agenda.
I do have a question about the, the letter we received in regard to pickleball.
Okay.
What do you want, what do you want us to do about that?
Nothing.
Okay. Just had to bring it up. Just had to ask. Okay, thank you. So, city clerk?
Yes, just a few things under boards and committees, under vacancies. We have one for a planning commission alternate, one on the utility advisory board, resident commissioner on the Punta Gorda Housing Authority. We have two seats on the building board, and one historic preservation advisory board alternate seat. Under nominations, we have, it's an unexpired term on the police officers' pension board. We have three eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all?
Thank you. Okay, also under nominations, we have two three-year terms on the planning commission. We have two eligible applicants. If you would like to nominate and appoint at this time, we can do so by motion.
Is there a second? Do we need a second? And then we vote.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to nominate and appoint. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then, lastly, under nominations, we have a three-year term on the utility advisory board. Again, we just have one eligible applicant. If you'd like to nominate and appoint.
Nominate and appoint Mr. Tucker.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to nominate and appoint Mr. Tucker to the utility advisory board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Under policy and legislation, so tomorrow is the ribbon cutting for the tails on the harbor. And, I mean, not, no, it's not, it's next week. No, it's, it is tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, the 20th.
I was going to say that.
Oh, you were going to say that? Okay, I won't, I won't say any more than, I'll let you tell, you can have all the details. The pickleplex ribbon cutting is next Monday on the 24th. We'd love for everyone to come out and bring your sneakers, because pickleball players want to give you an opportunity to play a little bit and see what it's like. And they're working hard to get more of the courts open, and it's looking grand out there. It's at 5:30, and we want to see everybody out there. Also, I went to a meeting yesterday for the Southwest Florida League of Cities Advocacy Committee. And I've started an advocacy committee so that we can learn how to work with our legislative delegation and really work in partnership with them. And so, I'm, I'm learning some of this, and I will be participating on the committee. And more to follow on this. So, yesterday was the first meeting, and a representative from the Florida League of Cities was there to provide educational information, so we're just getting started. So that's all I have. So I think, council member comments. Jahah?
Just that I'm, I'm going to sadly miss the mural ribbon cutting. I'm leadership Florida tomorrow.
It'll be there when you get back.
All right.
Yes.
Just one quick question. Where do we stand with putting the bollards on the new mural?
Well, remember, we had to get approval from FDOT, so I don't know where we are with that.
We're still exploring that with FDOT. We've got to get an initial design to them so that they can understand fully what we're proposing. Mitchell Austin, urban design for the record.
We need to do that as quickly as possible after the damage that was caused last week.
Yes, urban design is aware of the urgency.
Well, you brought up bollards. Where are we as far as getting the bollards up on Taylor?
Bollards on Taylor in front of the parking lot.
We're working on it.
We're not there yet, is what the answer is.
Okay, okay. I'm waiting with bated breath. Debbie?
Okay. I would like to invite you all to the dedication of Tails of the Harbor. Tomorrow at 4:30 to 5:00, you can come and meet the artist. He'll be there explaining where he got his ideas, and he's, he's a really fascinating gentleman. So I hope that you'll come early to talk to him. His name is Skip. And then at 5 o'clock will be the actual ceremony, and you're all invited. We have wine and water, and let's hope it doesn't rain. But you can park at the event center, and it's under the Gilchrist Bridge, which is the one that goes south into town. And if you haven't seen it, this is probably one of the best murals we've ever presented to the city. And, you know, as a member of the board of the, well, the mural society consists of ten people, and we do it all. But this is, this is really our crowning glory, and I hope that you'll join us.
Just for clarification, the ribbon cutting is at 5 o'clock, not 5:30, correct?
5 o'clock. Well, that's what I was told, 5 o'clock. 4:30, meet the artist. 5 o'clock, ribbon cutting.
Okay, because most of the ribbon cuttings are 5:30, that's why.
Well, this is run by Kelly, and she said 5 o'clock.
So we need to make sure we show up at 5 o'clock, or 4:30?
If it's at 5:30, I'll have to just say, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. She told me 5.
Okay.
No comment.
No comment. Oh, no.
Are you, and what did you do with your...
That's unusual for you.
I know. I would be different.
Okay. So with that, we'll take citizens' comments on any item that you wish. Please come to the podium, and you have three minutes.
Yes, Brad Gamblin, resident of Punta Gorda. Just have an observation and, and a little bit of a suggestion, or actually a mention, a suggestion. Council really now is functioning as sort of a parks and recreation committee, spending a lot of time on it. And frankly, I think some of the mistakes that have been made might not have been made if there had been a board, Parks and Recreation Board, or Parks and Recreation Department, but certainly a board that would be able to work with the citizens' input and do maybe even some basic planning and suggestions. We could probably avoid a number of the mistakes that, that are made just by, just being made, by not having proper input. Investigation of everything from pickleball, design, to, to the roundabout, which is affectionately known as the helicopter pad in some circles. Some of these things, we aren't really looking forward enough on. And maybe a committee similar to one of our boards should be formed for the Parks and Recreation, because we're spending a huge amount of time discussing park situations. There's little or no park planning for other parks that might be coming up that I know of. And I would like the council to consider and perhaps authorize the looking into forming such a group. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Please, yeah, come to the podium.
My name is Jeffrey Lustig. I wanted to talk about, I wanted to commend the city attorney and the city manager for the memorandum detailing about the lawful detention to issue formal trespass warnings with the citizen journalists who are coming into our town and making these YouTube videos. Wanted to bring attention that Rogue Nation is planning to come in, well, they're, they're, I'm sorry, I have Parkinson's, so it takes me a little while to speak, to crowdsource four hundred dollar donations to sue the city and to bring these lawsuits for the municipal ordinance of 1872-71, the Trespassing Act. And that they're, they're asking to get a four hundred dollar donation to split whatever money that they get, the settlements for these things, and have hundreds of people to come down. They have hundreds of thousands of views, plus at least from these five guys, fifty or sixty thousand subscribers. In the Charlotte County Sun, a January 13th, 2019, I don't know if you read the article, I have it here, about that the, they are mentioning that it's unconstitutional for city officials to issue trespass warnings, and that the illegality of the city's ordinance has been questioned in the past. In April 2017, a felony warrant request from the city's, state's attorney has stated the, that they asked to consider whether videotaping in the city buildings is a violation of the Florida statute, and deemed it's not a violation. My concern is, is that with crowdsourcing, that they could bring hundreds of lawsuits, or at least fifty lawsuits, that you'd have to defend. I went over and saw that just on the Ian McQuire, that we spent just five thousand dollars just on one trespassing thing. You're doing a great job on, on dealing with this. I saw that, that you put a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to secure the building, the city manager, and you're dealing with that, as I've talked to other people. I, I just wanted to be aware of this article, the city manager, and I have an appointment with you, city manager, at 10:00. And as a pawnbroker, forty years in New York City, I was caught in between the problem of a, an ordinance and being under the State Department of Banking. And I could describe that at a later time, but I'm also concerned about the trespassing of that...
No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Good morning. Gary Skilicorn. I didn't expect to speak up today, but certain, certain things prompted me. And I guess the first one was concerning the doggy park. That I, I would like to express my view that the dog park really is a part of our Henry Street property that was viewed as a gem in the rough a couple of years ago. And Councilman Wine, I believe he and I have kind of been in support of wanting to do things great for that property. And I think maybe now, now might be the time to broaden this interest as far as what Dover Coal is good doing. The dog park associated as well, too, to look at what, what the benefit to the future is for that Henry Street property. I was concerned yesterday when I noticed the rendering that was provided as a part of the presentation of the Dover Coal. The rendering showed development on that whole area. And I'm, I'm concerned about the writing, and it's, writing is on the wall right now. And again, I, I, I think we need to look at that as a gem in the, gem in the rough that could be served as benefit for the citizens beyond the part of development and build on every piece of green grass we have. So maybe a recommendation is, is, I don't think Dover Coal is focused on that. I don't think they're focused on the dog park. But now maybe we're broadening the search or broadening their, their view. Perhaps now is the time to look at it more broadly. And again, the, the sales tax opportunities in the future, as well, to put some dollars behind that as well. Thank you, and thank you for your service, Councilman Wine. I appreciate your, your effort.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Mayor? Could I just point out that since we're finishing so early, the videographer, we're not going to ask him to stay until we reconvene, but we will have it on the recording. So, no video, but it'll be on the recording that you came re-adjourned, and that's what we're doing, right, coming into, okay. I just wanted to make sure, if there's any questions about the video, that's why it's going to end, because the videographer won't stay until...
Okay.
Okay. Just not going to ask him to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, then, we will recess, and we will convene at 1:00 PM
Third floor.
In the third floor conference room for our meeting. For the shade, yes. For the shape, yes.
You shrunk.
For the meeting with David.
All of a sudden, I looked over, and you weren't there anymore.
At 1:00.